Yes. It's Fulbrook, how are you doing?
My lords, my lady, just two, two short points, if I may, before I conclude my submission.
Certainly, my mate.
I want to go back to one point taken underground two. Took your lordship, your ladyship, to what was said by the statutory consultees about the LVIA. And I then sent subject in submissions in response to questions that this is, this is based on a particular framework for assessment. And I just wanted to take the court to a short reference, where I can make that good, if I may.
Yep.
And so if I could take the court to page forty-four of the authorities' bundle, supplementary bundle, I'm sorry.
Supplemental.
Supplemental number forty-four. This is the AONB unit's first consultation response. And you can obviously see under the heading LVIA, and then landscape effects. And it's really the first and second paragraphs.
What, and the AONB disagrees?
Exactly, exactly.
Do you would like us to read that?
Yes, I'd be grateful, thank you, my lord.
And where do we stop after hi?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
What were you, what were the point I, the point I made from this is that clearly the AONB unit, again endorsed by Natural England, is providing advice about specific values that should be assigned, susceptibility values, and then sensitivity values to receptors. And that they do so by reference to example appraisals, given in the landscape value susceptibility criteria, which they refer to. And then they, they obviously quote from that then as well subsequently. So this is something, this is a technical exercise being done by reference to very specific guidelines and criteria that's been carried out here. But of course you get no indication of that in the analysis undertaken by the officer. And an important part of the context which the court will no doubt appreciate is that the officer's report is there to advise the committee members about how the officer has assessed this application, and then to assist them with making their own assessment. They are the final arbiters of whether permission is granted or not. And they need to understand from the officer's report how the various intentions and objections have been treated dealt with. They get no assistance from the treatment of the LVIA in the officer's report. It doesn't deal at all with these specific criticisms. It doesn't acknowledge in that section of the report that Natural England disagreed. And the court was interested understandably in what, what should the officer's report have said? And I've already given some examples. So another is, in relation to the LVIA, it should have said something along the lines of we disagree with Natural England or the AONB unit's criticisms of the LVIA because X, Y, Z. This is why the appellant's LVIA is right. And it's not, as I said, a peripheral issue. This is, this is one of the fundamental building blocks to that ultimate conclusion about harm that's reached. It is a fun, it's a, it's a fundamental part of the exercise. So we need to understand how that was dealt with. Because without that, we can't understand in my submission how the overall decision was taken.
It's one of the building blocks for the evaluative planning judgment that has to be made.
It is, my lord, exactly.
Thank you.
That's right. And I just repeat, as I said before, within this, there are various points taken about tranquility and dark skies. And again, as I said, there's no, no reference in the officer's report at all to how those are dealt with. So that's, that's the point on ground two. And then the court, again, understandably is looking to me for some assistance with Wotton and exactly what was decided in that case. And I give the court some references that might assist in unpacking, so Duncan O'Shea's conclusion on the fact in that case. So Wotton starts in the authorities' bundle at page two, three, four.
This is your second point, sir.
This is a case, yes, exactly, I rely on this case in support of my second ground, yes. I've already taken the court to the statement of principle I take from it, but my lord, my mistress, there is understandably interested in how the court dealt with the issues. So paragraph two of that decision on page two, three, six records what information was submitted to the local planning authority. And so you see this, among other things, there was evidence from, Miss Wotton represented from her, she was described as being a well-informed local resident. And there was a Mr Cameron who instructed experts to present reports on need for the development and the viability of the development. And then also Dr Knight, who was a local ecologist of distinction, who provided expert evidence in objection to the council. So when, when, when we're talking about expert evidence in this particular case, we're referring to those. Although in his discussion at paragraph thirty, the judge does refer also to statutory consultees, which is the issue in our particular case. Then in terms of how the judge goes on to deal with them, the reason why I struggle to find exactly the point at where, where the judge deals with the reasons issues, because he deals with them enmeshed in the other complaints, and you can see that in paragraph thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Paragraph thirty-four, yes.
I turn now, now I've turned to the granted challenge?
Yes, exactly, my lord. And so what you can see there is you're not dealing in the judgment with reasons as a sort of separate overall ground. But he does deal with them as and when those points arise in the context of the two, some of the key issues. One of those key issues is about the viability. Was the viability a material consideration? Was it properly dealt with by the local planning authority? Clearly starts then at length to record very lengthy submissions on part of, certainly there were multiple claims in that case. And the judge's own reasoning on viability.
Is it at seventy-nine and onwards?
Seventy-six onwards is, yes, under viability, my lord. And that, but I mean, in particular, paragraph eighty-five is worth noting. So I think up to paragraph eighty-five, the judge is dealing with whether viability was a material consideration, to understand it. And he goes on at eighty-five.
Do you want us to read eighty-five?
Well, it's simply, it's simply to say here, and this is the conclusion he's reaching on the fact, he is reaching the view that the officer's report did not understand or provide reasons for the rejection of the objector's evidence. And then he then goes on at length to give his reasons for that. But, but one of them is at paragraph ninety. And at the beginning there, he talks about the way in which objector's evidence was dealt with in the officer's report, says it gives a seriously misleading overall impression of the evidence of viability upon which members had to reach a judgment. I suppose that comes back to what I've just said about the importance of the officer's report providing the basis upon which members need to reach a judgment. And then he says, if officers are taking the view that the objective evidence, including the expert reports on viability, provided no basis for seriously doubting the viability of the proposal, the committee should have had a clear explanation as to why it did not. And so there may be other examples, but this is one example where the judge in that case found by reference to the reason of the report, the objection's evidence, that, that, you know, what was said in the objection should have been dealt with. And you should have been able to see that from the report.
Okay, so I've read to the end of ninety, is that?
That's, that, yes, that's all I, I would state to the court too for these purposes. But I, I'd just say that gives a bit, a bit more understanding of how Wotton was decided. And unless I can assist the court any further, those are all the submissions I have to make on the part of the evidence.
Thank you very much. And is there anything else you want to add at all on grounds one to three?
No, my lord, not, not in, not in addition to what I've already said.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr Atkinson, you will understand we had a discussion as to where we are over the lunch agenda. We do not need to hear from you unless there's anything you're dying to say on grounds one and three. But we would like to hear from you on ground two. And the same goes for Mr Duffall when we get there.
Certainly, my lord, I'm grateful for that indication. The principal controversial issue in this case was identified by the judge correctly, I say, at judgment one oh one.
Yep.
I.e. What would be the impact of these proposals on the AONB? In fact, she says, third line, this was the principal controversial issue, not the finer disagreements as to whether example receptor values considering the LVIA should be higher rather than moderate. I'll come back to that. So the principal controversial issue, I don't understand is in this litigation controversial. The judge, having identified it correctly, she also, earlier in the judgment at twenty-three and twenty-four, she correctly summarises there, the principles pertaining to the standard of reasons and weight to be given to the observations of objections of statutory consultees. And later, at eighty-five, she accepts the point raised by my lone friend that it is not necessary for every single point to be made derived, that principle derived from Wotton, not every objection has to be separately responded to. Now, in her judgment, the judge below spends quite a lot of time dealing with this principal controversial issue, i.e. the impact on the AONB, at her paragraphs ninety-seven to ninety-nine. And we can see, in fact, at ninety-nine, she sets out in full the two key paragraphs, which we've already been to in the officer's report, those being twenty-eight and twenty-nine. And by repeating them in full, it is clear that the judge has accepted that in those paragraphs in the officer's report, it is explained why. Why the officer herself, in this case, reached the judgment that she did, which is in, in conflict with the forcefully expressed opinions of Natural England and the AONB about that principal controversial point in issue. And it is clear, we, we touched on this to some extent this morning. It is very clear from reading those paragraphs set out in full by the judge that one can, one can ascertain the reasons for the officer's rejection of what AONB and unit and Natural England were saying. And, and the forcefulness with which those opinions were articulated doesn't really take us much further. They are matters of planning judgment. So we can see at twenty-eight, judge's ninety-nine acknowledges that this is a built development on a greenfield site, and it would cause harm to landscape and scenic beauty. Those being two separate concepts, but acknowledged as such by the officer there at paragraph twenty-eight. She goes on to talk about the context of the commercial buildings, the existing industrial estate. These are the reasons why the officer rejected the submissions of Natural England and the AONB. And they are also the reasons why the judge's decision based on that is unimpeachable in this respect. We spent, we were taken earlier to the transcript and, and what was said by Katie Miller, who did present, as you recall, partly in behalf of the AONB and jointly with Natural England's, its page SB two one eight and two one nine. And it was said in respect of the, the third paragraph on two one nine, it was said that what Katie Miller was saying there was that the officer had missed the point. In fact, that's really just another way of saying she disagreed. She understood the difference, the distinction between landscape and visual, and she didn't miss any point. She just disagreed with what had been said and reported to the committee in writing by Natural England and the AONB unit. And back to the judgment below. It is, it is because of those reasons, because of the thorough exposition of what had been said by both of these representative statutory consultees, certainly Natural England's statutory, and the summary of what they'd said at ninety-seven and ninety-eight. And, as I say, including in full paragraphs twenty-eight and twenty-nine, that the judge below is able lawfully and reasonably to come to the conclusion, as she does at judgment one oh eight. In my judgment, the officer's report deals adequately with the landscape objections from Natural England and the AONB. These objections would have had, would have no difficulty understanding why the officer's, officer's report had reached the conclusion it has on the impact on the AONB, the principal controversial issue.
What do you say about tranquility?
Tranquility is not directly referred to, but it is accepted that the summary of the representations made in the officer's report, that is not challenged. So we're on one seven seven. And it is, it is correct to say there doesn't appear to be any mention there of tranquility.
The reason on page one seventy-eight, just ten down, it's not Natural England.
Yes.
Fifth bullet point down.
You're right.
Sixth bullet point down.
Yes, well, right, my lord. I, I was, I was going to go on to say, in fact, that there were further, on, on the day of the committee, there was a further representation from the claimant herself, which I understand was sent directly to the committee members. And I don't for a moment recall whether that mentioned tranquility.
Well, I've just done a search on tranquility in the supplemental bundle. And the, it's referred to, first of all, at page forty-two.
Fifty-two, so, my lord.
Hmm?
Which page is it?
Forty-two. Which is where the, you have the heading.
Yeah.
Then it's referred to, in what I think are response documents, at page one twenty-one, two, two, and that's it.
Yeah.
But I think that means that it's not mentioned in the officer's report.
I must be right, but I think the, the point really, yes, of course tranquility is an aspect of AONBs. But the, the overall impact.
What, what, have I missed something?
It's in, yeah, it's in the officer's report on one seven eight.
One seven eight.
Yeah, there's, there's.
The AONB unit, it's the.
Justice, there's. Yeah.
Is there any objections?
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm about to be impressed with the lordship's word search.
Well, I shall speak to my word search face, please.
So I, I think the point, yes, it hasn't been highlighted, but the, the way we can deal with that is, as is accepted, Wotton doesn't require every single aspect, every single objection to be dealt with separately. Also, the tranquility is a part of the principal point of contention being the impact on the AONB. Tranquility being a particular aspect of sometimes, in some cases, what it is that is to be conserved in AONBs.
One thing that can be said about tranquility is it's different from visual impact. So when we're looking at landscaping, siting and so on, it's really what, what's there in front of you. Whereas tranquility is an experience, isn't it?
It's, it, it's a different, it's a different form of experience, yes, except that's correct. Yes, and it hasn't been, it hasn't been focused on to the extent that the, 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 the impact, i.e. the, the impact on landscape and the effect of the landscaping, the trees in due course have been. But it can't be said that it's, it wasn't taken into account at all by the officer.
I don't know, it doesn't seem to be one of the points that Miss Miller referred to already, two one eight to two one nine, unless I'm missing it.
No. It's not a point either which I recall was made much of in, in the court below.
So can I just see if I understand? The position appears to be that tranquility, except possibly at one hundred and seventy-seven, is not separately referred to. But no need to deal with every point expressly.
That's.
And it's comes under the overall umbrella of AONB.
And, and harm to the AONB, yes.
Yep.
That's correct. My lord.
Is, is.
The, unless I, well, there's only one more thing, my lords, my lady, which I perhaps wish to address you on. And that's the, the point made. It flows from the allegation that the officer had missed the point. And, and also the, the detail into which both of the objectors dealt with, articulated their criticisms of the LVIA. It needs to be remembered, of course, that they didn't produce their own LVIA. And neither is there anywhere, rightly, is there any criticism of the methodology or suggestion that that which has been produced was not done in accordance with accepted industry standards.
There is, in the addenda report, two oh three to two oh four, the nine additional representations refer to a significant impact on noise, lighting in the third bullet point. I don't know if that's the same as tranquility or not.
It's very adjacent. Yeah.
There's another reference to light pollution further down and increasing traffic, which seems to be part of the problem about tranquility. So there were additional representations made.
Yeah. Yes, and it's, it's worth noting that in their articulation of their concern, Natural England at SB forty-two include within tranquility, as you might expect, lighting, certainly in the title.
Yes, and what it says at one forty-two is whilst recognised that the tranquility is affected by the A2, the proposal would further erode tranquility by virtue of noise activity and traffic at the site.
Yeah.
That seems to be the concern.
The, the comings and goings.
Yeah, from the A team to the site, yeah.
Yeah, adjacent to the Dover Road, of course. But my final point, my lords, my lady, then, was really the, the criticism which has been made of the failure to wade into the LVIA to the extent which the objectors have, by which, you know, you, you will understand that they broadly work by attributing value to receptors and making an assessment in accordance with, with that, rather than just having a, having a look and getting a feel for it. The judge characterises these points as finer disagreements at judge one oh one. And that's quite right, as we, as we just heard a moment ago, my lone friend. These inform ultimately, they, they contribute to and help to inform the overall judgment, which needs to be. and help to inform the overall judgment, which needs to be made, particularly about, um, visual impact. But to require or expect an officer or indeed a judge to set out why particular values have been attributed to particular receptors, for example, is to go way beyond the duty and would be, in fact, giving reasons for reasons which we know Watten deprecates. And as I can assist, my lords and my ladies.
No, thank you very much, yes, clear. Yes, Miss Tuffell. Same, same with you, ground two, but no need to address the son of grounds one and three.
My lord, I'm grateful. Um, there is one very small just point of principle, which it may be that you don't want me to trouble your lordships with irrespective of ground one, and it's just by reference to, um, the case, or the Brockstone case in particular. And my learner friend's submission that this court should be, uh, slow to find that there's no prejudice where somebody has been deprived the opportunity of making oral representations. That's just one point of principle that I would be grateful for the opportunity to address your lordships on, if it wouldn't trespass too much on your patience.
Sorry.
Okay. Um, the submission by reference to that case, um, was, as I say, that the courts have made it clear that, uh, one should be slow to find no prejudice where someone's been deprived of that opportunity to make oral representations. But in my submission, the court, the courts have taken different approaches in cases where the person denied the right to speak was the subject of the decision, as compared to cases where the person may be affected by the decision but is not properly to be regarded as the subject of the decision. And Brockstone.
Say that again.
Yes.
A, but the person denied is what?
The subject of the decision. So the courts have taken a different approaches in cases where the person denied the right to speak was the subject of the decision, as compared to cases where the person may be affected by the decision but is not properly regarded as the subject of the decision.
And you say denied the right to speak is actually a fair theory, and Mr Brockstone, no, it was Mr Bradford.
Mr Bradford.
Um, wasn't told that they were investigating these allegations by young girls, and he just got a letter saying, sorry mate, you're out.
Exactly that, my lord. And the case that's referred to in Brockstone is the case of Exparte Cotton.
Yeah.
And that was another example which related to the subject of the decision. In Exparte Cotton, a decision had been made to dismiss a police officer.
For being overweight.
For being overweight. Rather unfortunate, um, in circumstances where he hadn't had the opportunity to see or respond to the report, uh, which described him as, as such. In, in that case, in any event, the court found there was no prejudice because the issue around his, surrounding his weight had apparently been raised with him numerous times before. And so one sees in Brockstone, um, so it's behind tab two of the authorities' bundle, and it's page six.
Page?
Page six, my lord, of the authorities' bundle, yes, page six.
Sorry, my hearing is not very good.
Forgive me, I'll speak.
That's okay. It's just a reasonable adjustment is to shout at me.
Yeah. I'll bear that in mind.
Thank you.
Um, so, one sees at paragraph four, there's the reference to Cotton and the summary of the principles from Cotton.
Yes.
And at the beginning of the quote from Cotton, while, while cases may no doubt arise in which it can properly be held that denying the subject of a decision an adequate opportunity to put his case, except I would expect those to be rare. And again, one looks at the final principle summarized from Cotton, um, over the page number six, where a decision maker is under a duty to act fairly, the subject of the decision may probably, properly be said to have a right to be heard. I, in that case, as my Lord, Lord Justice Lewis says, Mr Bradford was not given the opportunity to respond, whether in writing or orally, to the allegations against him. And there are three particular points of note that distinguish that case from the facts of the present. So the first, as I say, is that, um, Mr Bradford was the subject of the decision against whom serious allegations had been made. Here, while the appellant may be affected by the decision because she enjoys walking and cycling in the AOMB, neither she nor CPRE nor Natural England are properly to be regarded as the subject of the decision. They are no more affected by the decision than anybody else who enjoys using this part of the AOMB. Second, as I've mentioned, in Bradford, the claimant was given no opportunity to res, to respond at all. Plainly that's to be distinguished from the fact of this case, where the appellant, CPRE and Natural England all had and took the opportunity to make written representations.
I mean, very slowly, you've referred to Bradford, I thought we were talking about Cotton.
I'm sorry, my lord.
Brockstone was a council and Mr Bradford, I got the council and the man.
So it, in.
In Brock, yeah.
The case of Brockstone, it's Mr Bradford against him, the allegations of him.
Teacher.
Yeah.
Got it, got it.
The tennis was in Brockstone, not in Bradford, as I thought.
Yes, it was, it was in Brockstone, it concerned Mr Bradford, who is a tennis coach. So, and third, if one, um, looks at paragraph twenty of the decision, page eight of the authority bundle, Mr Bradford had, in the subsequent court proceedings, provided an affidavit. He had submitted evidence to the court explaining what he would have said had he been given the opportunity to say it. He disputed a number of allegations or had varying recollections. Here, in spite of the fact that both the appellant and Dr Newport, the CPRE, have submitted witness statements, neither have given any evidence at all of what they would have said. And my learner friend relies then on the case of Kelly and a particular point of criticism that he makes of the judge's decision was that she said, well, Mr Kelly will be, would have been directly affected by the development. Uh, and my learner friend for the appellant says, well, so will Mrs Moakes. But in my submission, Mr Kelly was much more akin to the subject of the decision in that he would be particularly and uniquely affected.
Because.
It was next door to his house.
His house.
Yeah, I just wanted to get you, make sure that that's.
Oh, oh, because, because it was a proposed residential extension next to his home. Next to his home, um, he, uh, didn't have the opportunity and it's apparent that nobody else raised the concerns about the impact on his residential amenity.
So if there'd been an objection from the owner of Higham Court, we might have been in Kelly territory.
Well, quite possibly, but there was a particular, um, concatenation of factors in that case which led to that.
In Kelly.
In Kelly. So, so for example, in Kelly, one of the things, um, that influenced Mr Justice Dove's decision was that he had had no opportunity to read or respond to the officer's report or to respond to any matters that were raised by the officer in their oral presentation. In the present case, the appellant and CPRE made written representations after the officer's report was published, commenting on the officer's report. And I can give you the references for that, that would be helpful. But it's plain that both CPRE and the appellant had read and were responding to the officer's report.
Wait, hold on. You were saying, actually, one of the letters, I think.
Yes, for example, Mrs, Mrs Moakes, um, said, this one sticks in my mind just because it was a memorable phrase, but she said it appeared from the officer's report that the officer had been on the Kool-Aid. So she plainly has read and responded to the officer's analysis.
Do you by any chance have the reference? We don't need to.
Yes, I do have the reference, my lord. Just bear with me a moment. Um, the CPRE letter is, um, at SB, sorry, supplementary bundle 117. And at the bottom of that page, so this is the representation dated the 21st of July, 2023. And at the bottom of that page, there's a paragraph that begins specifically.
Okay.
And the second sentence of that paragraph, CPRE say, we are therefore extremely concerned to read the revised committee report remains unchanged. So commenting on the analysis in the officer's report. And, um, the appellant's Mrs Moakes's representation begins on page 124 of the supplementary bundle. It's dated the 25th of July, and there are numerous references throughout the officer's report. But in particular, the one that I had in mind that I mentioned a moment ago is on page 127, under the heading conclusion.
Yeah.
So specifically responding to the analysis in the officer's report. And the second point which distinguishes this case from Kelly, so in Kelly, Mr Justice Dove, um, said, well, they haven't had the opportunity to respond to the analysis in the officer's report. That doesn't apply here.
Where does stuff come in Kelly, actually, so?
Let me take.
Trying to find you.
Yes, of course, my lord. It's, um, so Kelly is behind tab four in the authorities' bundle. And the particular point is.
Paragraph two.
Uh, I think it's paragraph twenty-six, my lord, which is on page thirty-eight of the bundle.
It's paragraph twenty that seems to say that they didn't have time to digest the committee report. It's not clear to me that they didn't have the committee report before the meeting. There was a particular problem, they were promised, uh, to be told about the meeting and they sent it by second class, both that came after they left the house on the day. And that's what gave rise to the breach, the equivalent legal error to the failure to let them speak here. And then you get on to the, um, was there any prejudice as a result of the fact that they couldn't? And they'd made written objections, we know that because the planning object, uh, planning consultant had said that at paragraph five, he'd made detailed written objections. So I'm trying to work out where they didn't have the report, you said that confidently twice, but.
Yes, um, that was certainly my reading of the facts in, um, this case. Um, and I've just tried to ascertain where I got that from. If you'd just bear with me, my lord, while I just turn my eye to twenty-six, which is the note I've written for myself. I, I think it, I think it, perhaps, my lord, I've ascertained it from the sentence in paragraph twenty-six, which says, oral presentation of the objector's case affords the opportunity of persuading the members to depart from the officer's recommendation.
That's rather different from saying they had no opportunity.
Yes, I, I, I appreciate that.
If they'd got the report, they'd be in the same position as Mrs Moakes was in, so there's no difference between the cases, so.
That, that may be the case, um, in respect to the officer's report, and forgive me if that, I can't find the exact.
Because paragraph twenty is the only one, and he doesn't say he hadn't got it, this is, sorry to be so harsh on you, Mr Fulbrook, but I do think the facts in cases are actually quite important.
They are, I absolutely agree, my lords.
And all he says at twenty is there would be a need to digest the committee's report.
Yeah, let me just.
Which has been promulgated. It looks as if they'd had it, but they didn't reply in writing because they'd been told they'd be able to go to the committee, seems to be what he's saying, rather than that they didn't have the opportunity.
Yes, that may be, that may be, that may be right, my lord, and forgive me if I inadvertently misled on that point. The point that is made at paragraph twenty-six is that attending the committee meeting would also give the person the opportunity to respond to the oral presentation made by the officer and to persuade members to a view that differed from that of the officer.
Yeah, but that's Mrs Moakes's case, she's saying that, uh, the CPRE didn't have that opportunity.
Um, yes, except in this case, she did have the opportunity to respond to the officer's report and my learner friend for Mrs Moakes accepts that the officer's oral presentation did not depart from the officer's report. And the reference for that is in the core bundle, it's in the statement of facts and grounds. Core bundle, page 281, paragraph thirty-one A, where my learner friend says, the committee was initially addressed by the case officer who authored the officer's report and addendum. She summarized her analysis but did not depart in any material way from the reports.
Can you just repeat the reference, please?
Yes, it's core bundle.
Yes.
Page 281.
Thank you.
Paragraph thirty-one A. So that meant there was nothing additional further to the analysis in the officer's report for the appellant, CPRE or Natural England to respond to. And all had and took the opportunity, whether in writing, CPRE and the appellant, or orally, the AOMB unit and Natural England, to respond to the officer's analysis. So in light of the indication of, um, my Lord, Lord Justice Smith, I don't propose to say anything further on ground one unless that would be of assistance. It was just that point of principle I wanted to touch upon. I deal with ground two in my skeleton argument from page, paragraph fifty-one and following, on page seventy-six of the core bundle. And in my submission, ground two is based on something of a mischaracterization of the judgment below. One sees the grounds of appeal, um, set out in the core bundle on page sixteen. And the allegation is that having found that the harm to the AOMB was a fundamental difference between the second respondent and the objectors, the judge was wrong to find that the council wasn't required to explain why it had rejected their advice on that issue. But in my submission, that wasn't the judge's finding. She didn't say that Natural England or that the dispute between them on this fundamental issue didn't require reasons. She said that reasons had been given and they were adequate. And my learner friend relies particularly on the case of Watten, which is behind tab eleven of the authorities' bundle. And there were a number of, a large number of grounds that were being run. And the point of principle that my learned friend particularly relies upon, um, is at paragraph 30 of the judgment, which is on page 245. Now the court-
So sorry, page what?
Page 245, my lord, of the authorities' bundle.
Okay.
And the court posed the question whether reasons had to be given for rejecting an objector's position. Effectively, was it enough simply to say that a contrary proposition had been accepted without saying why? And Mr Justice Oosley found that there should be a discernible answer to the question, "Why did the officer and the council reject my points on the principal controversial issues in dispute?" Paragraph 30 of the judgment mentions that phrase, "principal controversial issues in dispute", or a derivation of it three times, and that is the focus throughout. Um, and at paragraph 31, the judge is not suggesting that the officer's report must give reasons for the reasons, just reasons why the report concluded as it did on the principal controversial issues. Each objector's representation doesn't need to be separately responded to, and it's not necessary to provide reasons to explain how each and every material consideration has been dealt with. No duty to give reasons requires that. Provided the substance of the point raised by the objectors are adequately addressed by reasons, that will suffice. And the first step, as Mr Justice Oosley recognized, in assessing the adequacy of the reasoning in any given case is to identify what the principal controversial issues were. In my submission, the principal controversial issues between statutory consultees and others, on the one hand, and the second respondent on the other, was the level of impact on the AOMB and the existence or otherwise of exceptional circumstances. As to the impact on the AOMB, the consultees said that the development would result in significant long-term adverse impacts. And the applicant, second respondent, said that the long-term impact would be moderate to slight. And as I explained in my skeleton argument at paragraph 54, the difference in those judgments principally arose from their differing views on two particular matters. First, the effect of the existing business park on the character and surround and of the area and surroundings. Second, the containment of the site by existing and proposed planting. Now, if we look, we've looked briefly, I appreciate, at some of the submissions that were made by the consultees. And if we then look briefly at those and the relevant responses in order to understand in round what the principal issues at large were before the committee. So the AOMB unit's first representation begins on page 30, 30 of the supplementary bundle. One sees in the second paragraph after the emboldened text, the application and site lies wholly. And it describes the site as rural and undeveloped, and says that this development constitutes a major development in the AOMB. Over the next page, pages, their relevant policy tests are set out and run through. So need impacts, scope of developing outside, et cetera. As to the impact on the AOMB, again, page 34, the first paragraph, the AOMB units, sort of halfway down that paragraph, refer to the defining character of the AOMB being rural. And they say that the development would undermine the characteristically open, undeveloped and rural nature. Second paragraph on that page, significant detrimental impacts to landscape character and localized views. Fourth paragraph, reference to the LVIA underplaying the landscape and visual impacts. This representation then reverts to a discussion on the need for the development before moving on to local planning policy and prematurity over the next two pages. And then paragraph, sorry, page 38, there's a reference to landscape character, um, subheading, and again, the AOMB unit arguing that this site is open countryside and rural in nature. As to visual impacts, that begins on page 40. In the first paragraph under that subheading, the AOMB unit recognized that longer and middle distance views would generally be curtailed from most directions because of existing trees and woodlands. Then they say that long distance views would be limited, but there would be views from within the site itself. Over the page, the first full paragraph, the development will be out of keeping with the existing rural character. And importantly here, my lords, my lady, it was said, um, by my learned friend that the AOMB unit had said it was inconceivable that landscaping would mitigate impacts. One sees here the AOMB unit recognizing, while landscaping might reduce the impact from locations out of the site, outside the site, it would take some considerable time and would not mitigate impact from the site itself. So it does recognize, um, the role of mitigation, of landscape planting in mitigating impacts. Then paragraph, uh, page, pages 42 to 43, there's-
Forty-one, there's something there. I, I'm wondering at the moment whether the argument by the OMB is you cannot at all ever have regard to the neighboring site because all we're looking at is the landscape harm on this site. Or whether they're accepting, as you've just said in relation to trees, that in principle, somebody might take into account the fact that although this is a built-up area, it's like right next to an existing one. And there's a penultimate paragraph in SB 41 that seems to be dealing with that.
Yes, so there's, the penultimate paragraph here notes the existing business park, says it's an anomaly.
Yes.
Um, and it says, although it's relatively contained, it still has significant detrimental impacts up close. Expansion of the business park would significantly exacerbate the effect on character and appearance. It would be entirely inappropriate to justify further harm by the existing presence as a distracting feature. But as we'll see when we come on to the response from, um, the applicant, they weren't justifying the harm on the basis of the existing business park. They were justifying the harm on the basis of the exceptional circumstances, um, supporting this development. But one mitigating feature, not, not just for visual impacts, but for landscape character, a relevant factor is plainly if there's already an intrusive development next door, large sheds, activity, lighting, vehicles. That's not just relevant to visual amenity. Plainly that has a capacity to impact on the landscape character of the immediately adjoining site.
In my mind, I was turning it around. I thought, say there was nothing there at all.
Yeah.
And they put something there.
Yes.
You'd say, look at this, it's affecting that lovely stream next door, or look the other side, it's affecting a lovely field.
Exactly.
If you actually got existing ugly, I'm not saying she's ugly, but she might ugly, existing ugly business park, then yes, you've got harm to the bits that you know building on, but there's less harm overall because it's not casting a blight on a scenic area next door, because that scenic area is already a business park.
Blighted already.
But already, that's, yes, that's what I was trying to say. That's exactly the point.
That's exactly right, my lord. And that's, that's what the applicant said in their response.
Oh, is it? Oh, right.
Um, they, they said, eh, eh, well, we'll, we'll come on, we can turn on to it now. But effectively, the fact that there is a business park there with all the hustle and bustle at, related to it, is capable of affecting the character of the site immediately next door to it. As you say, if it were a virgin piece of landscape, never been touched, um, it, it's certainly-
Conversely, you could have circumstances where the existence of something being there already leads to a rational planning judgment that, that makes it all the more important to protect what's around it.
Yes, that, 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 that could arise. Um, and so what, what the AOMB unit, um, and others were saying were, well, just because there's something that's harmful already doesn't mean you should, uh, allow something else that's harmful.
Don't make it worse.
Don't make it worse. And what the applicant was saying, well, there's already something there and that plainly exercises an influence over the landscape character of the application site. So if we just have a look at their responses, the responses, um, from that applicant, so, um, they begin on page 62. Paragraph, so this is the second respondent's response to the AOMB unit's representation that we've just seen. Paragraph seven, they say, well, the AOMB unit, he prescribed in this site as open, rural and tranquil, but they failed to grapple with the fact it lies directly next to an existing industrial estate. And paragraph eight, that existing industrial estate affects its landscape character. So they say paragraph nine, this is, the site itself is not an undeveloped countryside character, um, but one of open countryside and AOMB which includes a notable business park and you can't ignore that. And paragraph 10, any assessment of the land, impact on landscape character and visual amenity should take into account the business park. Paras 11, 213 describe the containment provided by existing and proposed mitigation. And then if one looks at paragraph 13 over the page, again, a reference to the business park. And 14, it's considered that this point lies at the heart of the differences between applicant's consideration of the site and surroundings in the LVIA and the AOMB unit's approach. Paragraph 21 on page 65 points out that the AOMB unit hasn't carried out its own landscape and visual impact assessment. Paragraph 33. Well, to understand the context, paragraph 32, um, the applicant sets out a comment from the AOMB unit, which effectively said, "You can't use the existence of the business park to justify this development." And paragraph 33 is a response, "Well, that's a fundamental misrepresentation. The proposal is justified because there's a demonstrable need, because it can't be located elsewhere, and therefore exceptional circumstances are made out. And the fact that it's going to be next to an existing industrial estate relates to the degree of harm, not to its justification." And, and then my lord, Lord Justice Lewis's point at the bottom of that page, clearly the degree of harm arising from locating buildings of the nature of that proposed alongside an existing larger structural similar nature would be less than if it were proposed in open countryside, to suggest otherwise defies logic.
Can you just remind me where that is?
Yes, that's the final sentence of paragraph 33 at the bottom of-
Thank you.
And just paragraph 38 on page 68, the second sentence in that paragraph says, "It's worth noting that the AOMB unit has not commented on or criticized the LVIA method or presentation of the LVIA, which accords with the guidelines of the Landscape Institute, nor has the AOMB unit undertaken a similar exercise to support its officer's comments."
I thought they had criticized it.
They haven't carried out a similar exercise, so-
But have they commented on or criticized the LVIA method?
No, not the method, just, just the various judgments that inform-
Oh, I see. The method is important.
Yes, yes, it's not, it's, it's, it's a criticism of method. This landscape receptor should have had a high or very high rate, so. Um, there's a reference to tranquility here in this response on paragraph 35, page 68. So tranquility and lighting, AOMB unit fails to acknowledge this part of the AOMB is not tranquil as suggested, nor does it refer to the CPRE mapping, which shows tranquility and lighting is already affected by the business park and the A2. There's not a dark skyline like some parts of the AOMB.
It's not understood by noise.
Yes, um. And then paragraph 55 is really the sort, the summary of the second respondent's response to the AOMB unit. And one sees there that, again, this issue comes back to the influence of the business park. And for your lordships' note, the, uh, second respondent then provided a detailed response to Natural England, which begins on page 88 of the supplementary bundle. Albeit, also working out before we turn to that, sorry, that there were then a number of visualizations provided, which begin on page 73 of the supplementary bundle. Because one of the criticisms had been, well, you haven't provided winter visualizations. Uh, and that wasn't a criticism that was accepted to be valid, but in any event, winter visualization provided.
When you think visualization, does this mean this is a photograph of what I would see if I stood there?
Yes.
Or is this an AI-generated? It could be anything.
Uh, no, it's, it's a visualization, as I understand it, of the proposed development using the parameters approved.
There's a picture on a search of data, what it looks like now.
The first is a picture of the site as it exists, for example, and then if you look at the second one, um, on page 73, you can see the proposed development.
Okay.
And that's-
I haven't done the homework, but the two on 73 and the two on 74, to my eyes, look almost the same. They're the same. What, what, what's going on there?
Yes, um, I think there's, if, if one looks at page 72, there's an explanation of what the visualizations are. So there's existing baseline, then year one, then year one showing a wireline, and then year 15.
Okay, so there-
These are all from the same viewpoint, the North Downs Way. The first, as recorded as existing, as existing, the second is-
So they're projections of what?
Yes.
Have the trees grown thick? Is that the point? Not very.
So one sees, for example, this is the proposed development.
Yeah.
Um.
You're on page 73?
Yes.
It's that big line in the bottom middle, which isn't there in the top middle.
Exactly.
And then I thought, aren't you showing the trees over time?
Yes, by year 15, yeah.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
And when do we get, which page is year 15 with the, um?
Well, I think, my lords-
AI-generated tree.
I think what they've, I think it's page 74, bottom one on page 74. Although I appreciate it does look quite similar to the one on page 73.
Well, it actually, somebody's seen it, it's worse than the one on the top of 74.
Yeah. Fred, I can't assist very much more with those. It may be that had I got my magnifying glass out, and apologies, I would have been able to assist more because, for example, on page seventy-five, one sees that there is a lot more vegetation in the second of the pictures, images.
Anyway, it's not for us to judge, so what looks acceptable or not.
No. So for your note then, there's also a response from the second respondent to Natural England's comments, which begins on page eighty-eight of the supplementary bundle.
Eighty-eight, I thought eighty-eight was the start of Natural England.
Yeah, the response to Natural England.
Is on page what?
Eighty-eight.
Okay, thank you.
And thereafter, we know that the AOMB unit submitted two further representations, which your lordships have been taken to, beginning on page one hundred. And effectively, they said, oh, well, the existing business park, this is on the final paragraph on page hundred, the existing business park doesn't extend to the application site, which comprises rural land. The proposed development would significantly impact the landscape character. And so again, that's back to the business park, page one oh six.
And you're taking us to all these because they provide the context that when people get the officer's report, they know what they're talking about.
Exactly that, my lord.
Yeah.
Exactly that. And I say it's apparent from reading these documents from this review that a number of points were at large, yes, between the second respondent and the consultees. But the principal controversial issue was the impact on the AOMB. Would it be moderate, slight? Would it be significant? And the two factors that influenced that judgement were the influence of the business park and the landscaping, the extent to which it provided or would provide. Those were the principal controversial issues. And when one comes to read the officer's report, one has to bear those in mind. And so the officer's report is behind tab five of the supplementary bundle. Turning to page one eight five. Paragraph twenty-four, this is where the assessment of impact begins. Knowing as we do what the principal issues in dispute were, paragraph twenty-four, we see the officer saying, the site benefits from extensive woodland screening and is bounded by the buildings of the Canterbury Business Park. Paragraph twenty-five, the proposed building would be of a scale and design similar to the existing building and additional tree planting is proposed. Paragraph twenty-six, the proposed buildings would match the look and feel of the existing buildings on the business park. Paragraph twenty-seven, there's a discussion about the removal of the employment zone. So the development would no longer extend towards Cold Harbour Lane, which was to the south, or the North Downs Way, which was to the west. So the impact would be localised. And longer term, the proposed planting would soften the impacts. Paragraph twenty-eight, the scheme would introduce built development onto a greenfield site. So there would be a degree of harm, but the site surroundings are important. The development would be viewed in the context of the existing industrial buildings, which reduces the harm to some extent. And in long distance views, the site is heavily screened. So knowing what we do about what people were arguing about in advance, reading that, it's perfectly apparent that the officer has accepted that the business park influences the landscape and visual amenity as existing and that the proposed landscaping will help to mitigate the impacts. Just in terms of noise, vehicle movements, et cetera, I recognise that they not expressly addressed in this part of the officer's analysis, but they plainly were in the officer's mind when they were assessing the impacts of the development because the tranquility was mentioned in the summary that your lordships looked at earlier. And if one looks at paragraph forty, the second part of paragraph forty on page one eight eight, this is part of the discussion of impact on heritage assets rather than the AOMB. But one sees there in the final sentence, lighting vehicular movements and noise associated would add further to this harm, to the heritage asset, that is. So plainly, the officer is aware of the hustle and bustle associated with the development and is taking that into account. And the fact it's not specifically referred to in the analysis of the AOMB impacts doesn't detract from that fact. Furthermore, in respect of lighting, just one further reference I don't think we've looked at already is in the core bundle. And it's the actual decision notice. So it's core bundle, page three zero one. Almost the final page of the core bundle. And this is a condition that was imposed on the planning commission. Condition twenty-six. So a lighting scheme was to be submitted and approved by the local planning authority to detail matters such as illumination levels and spread of light. And the lighting has to follow the recommendations in that guidance. And that's to ensure that light pollution is minimised in the interest of visual amenities of the area and to minimise ecological impact. Now, in my submission, if the appellant asks herself the question, why did the council accept that the harm to the AOMB would be limited rather than significant? The answer is clear. It's because the landscape and visual amenity of the area are influenced by the business park, which reduce its sensitivity. The proposed development would be of a similar scale and design and so would integrate into that existing development. There was extensive woodland screening and additional planting was proposed. And the containment meant that any impact would be highly localised and the proposed planting would soften the development. All of those were factors that could fairly be taken into account and lead to a rational conclusion that the impact on the AOMB would be limited. And I say that while the impact on the AOMB was a principal controversial issue, that doesn't mean that every specific criticism levelled towards the LVIA was a principal controversial issue. It cannot, in my submission, sensibly be suggested that the question of whether the receptor value for the landscape element of land use should be high rather than moderate, that was one of the criticisms. Or that the receptor value for the elm and petham character areas should be high rather than moderate high.
It's all in the wash.
It's all in the wash. And it would be unrealistic. Officers have to exercise a judgement about the extent of the information they provide in order to assist the committee members and avoid overburdening them with every twist and turn of the arguments. What mattered is the effect of the development on the AOMB and they were provided with an explanation of what that was and not just that it was the officer's view, but why it was the officer's view. And that, in my submission, was adequate. Unless I can assist your lordships further.
No, that's very clear and very helpful. Thank you. Yes, Justice, full book.
Thank you, my lords and my ladies. Just some brief submissions by way of reply. The first, I would obviously take your lordship's hint, if you want to hear on ground one, ground three. But since my only friend just made one point of principle in relation to ground one, Kelly, I wonder if I might just...
You can reply on that.
Respond to that.
You can reply on that.
I'm grateful, my lord. It's simply to say, my only friend says, as a matter of principle, the court has taken a different approach where it's dealing with a case where the subject of the decision was denied the right to be heard, as opposed to somebody affected by the decision. And my simple response to that, my lord, is look at Kelly. I mean, Kelly is a case where the claim was not the subject of the decision, he was affected by it. Now, there are different degrees to which a person might be affected.
I was about to say, would you accept that the degree of impact, even if not technically a decision directly of which the person is a subject, is relevant?
Yes, I accept that that can be a relevant consideration. My lord, I think I cautioned earlier about the court being very slow to assume that just because about the degree of impact in any given case, yes, Mr Kelly's neighbouring house was affected and extended. But it's very difficult for the court to say, well, the AOMB, the national landscape, is not something of fundamental importance to a particular individual. So one has to be very careful. But as a matter of principle, yes, it's relevant. But I think that's where my point lies. There's no bright line distinction in the authorities. It is like all these, they are fact-sensitive cases. But the court should not necessarily treat this any differently, simply because my client was not the subject of the decision. I see no support for such a bright distinction in the authorities. That's all I wanted to say in relation to ground one. And then I just want to make some short points in relation to ground two, if I may. Wotton is obviously a case of some importance to my submissions and the court's been taken to that a number of times. Suggestions, it seems to be made that in that case, the judge is not saying that there's a duty to give reasons for disagreeing with objectives, just a duty to give reasons for the decision. So Duncan Ussie was very clear, paragraph thirty of his decision. That he says, in my judgment, for legally adequate reasons to be given, for conclusions on the principal controversial issues upon which consultees, statutory or non-statutory, have responded, a lawful and properly reasoned conclusion on the principal issues in controlcy is likely to require at least some, albeit re-expressed, consideration of the principal points raised by the objector on those issues and the reasons why they were rejected. That is the principle that I take from Wotton, not a universal principle, because he says it's unlikely.
Isn't that not the principle, but a subset of the principle, which is that the reasons have got to make the answer intelligible to people who read the decision?
It is a subset of that principle, but it's one that's of particular relevance to a case like this, where you do have detailed responses from objectives, particularly expert objectives, particularly statutory consultees. So it is a subset of that principle, but one that is, I suppose, particularly important in this case. And that's why I'm drawn to that decision. And that's why I don't accept the submission that there's no duty here to expressly state why I disagree with the views of statutory consultants. I say that is what, that is what needs to give reasons for in this particular case.
Is there any other authority, any higher authority, other than this dictum of Sir Duncan?
My lady, all I can point the court to is obviously, I took the court to Wired and to that general principle that is often stated that there should be cogent and compelling reasons for disagreeing with the views of the statutory consultant. So it is well understood that where you have a statutory consultant involved, their views need to be directly addressed. That's not the same, saying that they need to be cogent and compelling reasons for reaching the ultimate decision. Do you need to directly address what the statutory consultant, the expert, what he's telling you?
But if the consultant says, if it's a matter of assessment, not absolute prohibition, and the consultant says, I think it's inappropriate to look at the neighbouring bit, not just because you've got to look at the bit that's interesting, but I just think it's inappropriate. What more can the other person say than, no, I don't think it's inappropriate? I don't think it's inappropriate because they're next to each other and the one casts a literal and a metaphorical shadow on the other. Hard to see, when you're grappling with that kind of issue, what more could be said?
Well, one does need a clear explanation of why it's appropriate. You don't get an explanation of why it's appropriate in this case. You get what you get in the officer report is saying, because of the context of the site, the harm is reduced. Not why, not why can the officer make that in circumstances where the AOMB unit naturally over the same, it's not appropriate to make that.
They say it's not appropriate because they just want to look at the site, the subject of the application. But the other people say, no, no, it's not appropriate only to look at the site. It's appropriate to look at other sites. And why is it appropriate to look at other sites? They've already got a ginormous building, a business park on it. I don't know why that isn't giving reasons.
Well, because these are not issues that the AOMB or Natural England were blind to. They clearly recognise that. But they said, notwithstanding that, it's not appropriate. My lord, there does need to be some kind of explanation to why that fundamental principle objection has been departed from here, when you're dealing with, dealing with, as in Natural England's case, a statutory consultant who's advising you how to give great weight to.
So you actually have to say in terms, I disagree with Natural England's view because it's blindingly obvious because it's right next door to another existing industrial estate, it can't be looked at in isolation as a rural field in the middle of nowhere.
Well, my lady's painting the point as blindingly obvious, but it wasn't blindingly obvious to...
It's more or less what was said.
Well, my lord, that's what's said by the appellant, the applicant.
Well, but I'm saying it.
Well, my lord, and that may be the case, but of course...
I mean, that, yeah, and I may be wrong, but...
Well, Natural England and the AOMB unit are not saying that. And they are bodies with significant expertise in this matter and with all due respect to this court. That is their specific statutory function. And so...
I could almost ask them in return, why do you say it's inappropriate? You asserted it, you, Natural England, wherever it was, and you said it's inappropriate, but why are you saying it's inappropriate?
Well, my lord, they do, I mean, they do explain that. Trying to find the reference now, I think it's paragraph, I think... Bear with me one moment, but they do explain why. Page forty-one supplementary bundle. And it's the final two paragraphs of that page. This is where they quite clearly explain, they say, yes, it's adjacent to a business park, but it's an anomaly, first of all, it's an anomaly in the landscape. When you look at the landscape realistically, they say you should do that. It's an anomaly. And they then go on to explain that ultimately, this is about providing large-scale industrial buildings within undeveloped agricultural land. And in landscape terms, they say that's how you should view this site. And visually, for example, yes, there are other buildings and you will experience those buildings visually when you move around. But they do stress in that final paragraph that the MPF is unambiguous in relation to its policy on AOMBs, requiring protection of the landscape as well as the scenic beauty. And it says that protection is principally independent of the extent of public views of development and more in respect of the protection of the land itself. They have, in my submission, have clearly explained why they take the views that they have. And it is that explanation, that reasoning, that needs to be grappled with. And we do not understand why the council took a different view. All we know is that they accepted the submissions being made by the applicant. Obviously, made the same point in relation to the mitigation of landscape harm from planting and also made the same point in relation to tranquility and dark skies. And my only friends could not take you, going for where the officer has dealt with tranquility and dark skies. Say that my only friend, Mr Fur, took you to a point under an entirely different matter in relation to heritage impacts where that is addressed, but no acknowledgement of those, the relevance of those points to landscape or any impact on the AOMB. No acknowledgement at all of the relevance or importance of those matters. And that is a stark omission, given what is said by Natural England and the AOMB unit themselves. Now, there's much to be made about, well, what was the principal controversial issue in this case? What did the reasoning need to grapple with? And it's been accepted. The impact on the AOMB is a principal controversial issue, controversial issue. And the matters that I've just described go to why, well, perhaps to take it from best principles. The duty is described in the South Bucks case is to explain why the matter was decided as it was. I'm referring here to, you can see in paragraph twenty-five of Wotton at page two four three of the authorities' bundle, why the matter was decided as it was and what conclusions were reached on the principal... on the principal controversial issues. And, and also, they must not give rise to substantial doubts as to where the decision-maker erred in law. But one needs to understand then, in my submission, why the principal controversial issues were decided in the way that they were, and these are all matters, the tranquility.
Are you saying that was a principal controversial issue?
Well, my lady, this is, this is the point, that.
I'd just like to know what your case is on what was a principal controversial issue, because at the moment, it's been said against you, the principal controversial issue was the impact on the A O M B.
It, it, well, my lady, I accept that.
Of which these were facets.
Well, exactly, my lady, I accept that that was the principal controversial issue.
So provided that that's addressed correctly, you say it wasn't, but why does one need to descend into detail about facets of it?
Well, my lady, because, precisely because you need to understand why, why that conclusion about the effects of the, on the A O M B was reached, why, what was, why was that conclusion on the principal controversial issue reached? You cannot, you cannot understand that without knowing how these various facets input into the decision. Now, do you need to deal with every single detail? I do not make that submission, but I do say, I do say that you do need to deal with these very fundamental points that are being taken by statutory consultants, they all feed into that principal controversial issue, they are not principal controversial issues in themselves, but they don't need to be, because they feed into that overall issue, and that's why it's so important that there's some explanation given for how they've been dealt with, and, and how particularly those objections have been dealt with. As I say, that, that is absent in my submission. And indeed, my submission, I say, is underlined by the fact my only friend, Mr Fur, took you to, various submissions made by the applicant, where they say, well, we disagree with what Natural England and the A O M B unit say here. And, and that's the point, there is a fundamental disagreement. What you get in the officer's report is accepting the, um, views of the applicant, you don't understand why that, why that disagreement has been resolved in the way that it has. And, uh, so that, as I said, underlines, uh, my point. If I may just turn my back.
Yeah, please do.
Well, unless I can assist the court any further, that is in my submission to reply.
No, that's very helpful, thank you very much. Um, can I, on behalf of the court, thank everybody for, uh, the way in which this has been well prepared and the submissions have been clearly focused, very grateful. It will come as no surprise to you when we do judge it now, we reserve our judgement. The parties will get it initially as an embargo draft. Certainly, everybody in council's row knows exactly what that means, and if there's any doubt in the rows behind, please, will council make sure that that is done. I assume that a list for the embargo has been given, if it hasn't, it should have been given to, to my clerk or to have got to us. Um, I cannot tell you when we'll give the judgement, we will get it to as soon as we can. When you get the draft, as council know, it's for typos and obvious factual errors, but not for the rearguing of the case. We would hope that you would be able to produce a, an agreed list of corrections and an agreed order. If there are matters in dispute arising on the order, uh, what we would welcome would be a draft order which indicates who's taking different points where, and brief, very brief explanations as to why there is a difference of opinion about that. And we would then hope to deal with that and all, and consequential matters on paper, without the need for the parties to attend again. If we have to call on you to attend again, there's something gone wrong somewhere, uh, but we hope that that won't happen. Uh, so thank you all very much, not just the people in the front row, but those behind who have been involved in the work to get this done, thanks so much.